Only strangers.
Jill? Borrowed two.
We borrowed ten.
Two?
Wait, do you need one too? I need three.
Oh, three.
Oh, we're all prepared.
Get some of those property of town of Durham ones.
There we go.
There we go.
Talk about the flowers, Earl.
In that second drawer down in that cabinet is a box of pens. So if you come in.
Property of town.
Yeah, if you come in and you miss one, just grab it.
Everybody get plenty of sun today?
I wish.
Yeah, one day.
Yep. Hope you liked it today.
I'll ask you for another three months.
That's right.
So who wants to be chair? I'll nominate them. Todd, do you want it?
Mont?
Who's willing?
Define, willing.
Who's willing?
That's right.
Okay, willing?
Utah.
Cuff into the chair.
Calls you a state vice. Stay?
How much political BS do I need to talk about?
Zero.
All right.
Zero.
That's your job?
I cannot stand political BS.
Okay.
Ah, we have a slate.
I don't mind running a meeting, but the political piece, all right.
Cut it off flat at the knees. I cannot stand it.
I'm not the most diplomatic person in case, cannot. Picked up on that.
I bet I got you beat.
You might actually.
Yeah, I will claim sole position at the bottom of that ladder.
If we need to convince John Semino to join us. He would be great. I met him at a New Year's party.
Oh, you did?
And I tried to convince him then. We need a little more pushing, so you.
You're put to the task. And we need a couple more alternates too, or associate members, whatever you guys want.
That's what he mentioned.
It's only one day a month for a couple hours a night.
He also sort of gave me the impression that he did not like to say no to people. So I feel like if we gang up on him.
Gang up?
Use your charm.
That I'm not above.
Where does he work?
Field tripping people.
He works at.
Oh, work.
He works for Boden.
He said he does a lot of their planning and appears in front of the Brunswick planning board all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So he'd be great. Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
One way to get at it.
That's good.
There you go, there you go.
We need something controversial so we can get a better turnout at our town meeting.
Yeah, it's tough. It's really small. Boden's got maybe two hundred fifty or so people shot.
Yeah, it's about the same.
As soon as the food is served, they're eighty percent of them are gone at that point.
Yeah, well, we don't have, we don't enact a school budget. That cuts a lot of attendance. We get about that much at ours and we've probably got more. We got close to four thousand people in this town. We run about two hundred and fifty people at that meeting.
It's a neat concept though, the sense that people can actually come in and.
Oh, there's no doubt.
Vote one way or the other.
There's no doubt. Yeah, I've thought for many years that there was going to be a time when another form of government might be better, but. No. No. It's nothing more democratic.
There's a lot of politics involved, you know. The road commissioner is the road commissioner.
Yes.
You mess with him and your post office box will be down. The next time the snow flies.
Doesn't matter.
I don't mess with them and.
I know.
Just knock down anyway.
For three years I was in the town, in town all the time, and I did the moderating for the meetings.
There you go.
Introduced them a few times and patted them on the back and.
Gotta know your plow, plow truck driver personally, you know, so. And you can. Watch out for my mailbox. All right, are we ready to?
Let's do it.
John, are we ready? I'd like to call this meeting of the planning board session. Guess we can start with a pledge of allegiance. All right, pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Skip the quorum. We have a good quorum tonight. Any amendments to the agenda that anybody wants to bring?
I don't know whether this is the time for that. I don't know whether you're asking the audience or just the.
I'm asking.
Um.
Generally.
We should probably appoint officers.
Who want to do that first?
That would make, that would make good sense.
And save the minutes till the end.
Save the minutes, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then do amendments to the agenda, if anybody has any. Well, um, election. We need a chairman and a vice chairman.
So I will nominate Todd Bowler for chairman.
All those in favor? All right, vice chairman. I'd like to nominate Ann.
Did you accept that or did you oppose?
Let me, let me see how this meeting goes. No, no, I accept. Um, I'd like to nominate Ann Torogosa for vice chairman.
Second.
All those in favor? Well, yeah, we'll get that done. All right, amendments to agenda. Are any, do you want, what do we have?
Well, I forwarded a request to the, uh, to the code enforcement officer to see if the town would consider reconsidering the issue of soil seepage from the garage onto my client's well. The basis for the request was that he first learned about this project.
Mr. Feldman, could you please sit up there where people can see you and identify yourself?
Well, it's very rare.
Start where one.
It's very rare that people don't, that ask me to speak up.
Well, we're on, we're on TV, so.
Yeah, we need to get it recorded, sorry. I need to, I need to say so.
It's not a problem. So my client learned on Christmas, two thousand fourteen, Christmas Eve, about this request and he just didn't have enough time to get a soils expert involved, do a study, do an evaluation, et cetera, so. The, and I, and I understand from reading the transcript that the board member said it at that first hearing. You know, we'd love to have more information if you can bring it forward, so. We have in fact, um, a soil scientist report. And I would like to, if, if the board will entertain a request to reconsider that decision. I have it with me to, to share with the board. Obviously, if you don't entertain that request, then I'm not gonna spend your time asking you to read something from a soil scientist. But that's the request.
I think we can probably take that up in connection with when we talk about the application itself instead of as an amendment.
Yeah.
Whether we'll consider it or not, if we can talk about it at that time.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
That does make sense.
I have one amendment to the agenda. Ariella Clark will not be here tonight. She withdrew her application for this meeting. And she may, it may be next month, I'm not sure. So there's one less.
That's a good thing.
Okay, uh, so we should do Mr. Crandall, Earl Crandall. Step right on up, up to the microphone. Who's, uh, paperwork, sorry.
We should do Mr. Crandall?
The show being.
Easy enough. Guess it'll be the hot seat really fast.
We can nominate Todd as chair and it's already out of here.
The things we were looking for was proper sizing on the lot, correct? We were looking for the deed, correct?
His deed?
Did we get the deed off?
Is that this one you mean?
Yeah, I thought we got it last time.
This is the one that, um, that identifies the right of way. Which is the one I thought was that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's.
You wanted the deed when I sold the two acres out front on the road. And, uh, we have that.
And then, and then, um, the second paragraph after the definitions of beginning, accepting and reserving is the, um, the right of way grant? That was supposed to be in the, um, in the deed for the frontage lot?
That's there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what it is.
And you had asked about my deed and my deed goes back when I bought the twenty acres and when I went to the Andersgoggin county of registry, they, they said I should have a deed, but I'd have to go to a lawyer to get it. I guess they take off what you sell. From what you originally owned.
Yeah.
And you never get a deed unless you go and specifically say, I want a deed for what's remaining. Is what I, what I understand. That's what they said.
Right, I think we just needed to see the deed that you deeded out. To make sure that you accepted and reserved that right of way, and it sounds like you did.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, that's it.
Your original deed would include everything.
Yeah, yeah, I found that strange, yeah, but that's, that's how they do it, I guess.
Yep.
Well, yeah, typically if you don't want to get a deed done, as you sell the pieces of property or the entire parcel, a new deed would be, would be run to identify the boundaries of the parcel.
Yeah. If I had a chance to take a look at the lot size and lot two and three look, look to me like they're, uh, proper sized enough.
I did the math and it seemed to work this time.
Yep. It's really cool.
So it has to be. So the dimension that borders on the right of way has to be three hundred feet in length, which is, is five hundred and sixty. And the depth of the lot perpendicular to the front should be at least two hundred feet for at least three hundred feet along the right of way.
That's where we did that little two by three card and laid it along the, the, um, the Crandall's side of the right of way, not on the butter's side of the right of way. To make sure that it was entirely within the lot parcel as far as the two hundred by three hundred feet. It seemed to be extra a little bit on both.
In the backlash, you'll have a minimum of five acres, not including any land constraining the right of way, so it looks like it's five point four one.
Yeah. And I think the right of way, the right of way, um, square footage of the right of way is indicated on the plan. One by nine, four acres. So I added up all four parcels plus the right of way, so all four add up. Supposed to be, that was where we wound up with deadhead last time.
And you were asking about whether it included the right of way and for some reason he put net in there, which means it does not. That's why he wrote that net.
Yeah.
It excludes the right of way.
So.
The description is only the description across the front lot. So when a new deed would get set for the lot that he might sell, a new description continuing from this one through the lot would then be recorded similar to this one.
Yeah, so the deed to the middle lot would have to include the right of way over the first lot. And except and reserve the continued.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right of way to the, for the benefit of their lot.
And that would be contingent on any building permit that that.
Yeah, the deeds would have to be done.
Be presented.
Certain folks.
Going to the backlot.
I'm reading subsection G of the ordinance. So section six, A, one, G. And I'm not really sure what it says.
Ooh, I didn't backfill. Talking backlot, remind you.
Backlot, yep.
Yeah. G. Section what?
Six, A, one, G.
This is a requirement for the road?
Yeah. Section, the right way brought up to some. Things may be constructed on a backlot with planning board approval. So I guess we don't even need to get to this right now because he's not asking to construct a dwelling, right?
Right.
And it seems to me that this is basically saying because it's a backlot rather than a subdivision, it excludes the requirement for paving.
Paving, right?
Yeah.
So it's, the, on the plan is a cross-section of a fifty foot wide gravel road bed per ordinance. It should, it should match up the ordinance. It's a little hard because the one in the ordinance had pavement on it and so they tried to exclude it in the drawing, but it essentially seemed to be fine.
Hmm, yeah.
Is there, was there an easement recorded on behalf of the town for sewer purposes for the first?
I haven't found one, but, um, so I, I must admit I didn't go looking.
It should be correct.
Is the accepting and reserving, can I actually see the deed? Is the accepting and reserving language in easement or is it a?
There's a bunch there. I'm not sure whether that's.
It's an easement or right of way for all purposes, including utility service connections, ingress and egress and right to alienate such rights without restriction. Serve remaining land and grant reserves and sign and create. So do we need to have the town included in that?
Yes.
On the next.
Well, I mean, the problem is that Mr. Crandall can't give us an easement. Can't give the town an easement over that first part because he no longer.
Sure he can. His, his heirs are assigned, he can assign it to whoever he wants.
Including utility service connection and.
Give CMT an easement.
Give him as a sign, so he can assign.
Put a poll. Matter of fact, they had to put two polls.
Right, because that's utility service.
Yeah.
Is sewer going to be a utility?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, it should.
All right, so I, unless there's anything else.
Any else got anything?
Nope, good.
Nope.
So I move to find that the application as presented this evening meets the standards of the backlot ordinance. And, uh, move to approve Mr. Crandall's application contingent on the eventual transfer complying with the rest of these requirements, including, um, reserving and accepting an easement along the right of way for both the town as well as both the backlots.
Can I get a second for that?
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? We are all set for the moment, Mr. Crandall?
I have here, um, we need to sign the, uh, actual.
Get it out.
If I have it actually valid, it might be my line. How many of those do we need to sign?
Just two. Wow.
Actually, I want, this, I think this is what I would recommend if I may. That he have another one of these cut that include that language in regards to the easement to the town as well as the additional butters on the plan, so that once it's signed. And because that will also need to be recorded with the plan, right?
It should.
Do we need to do that or, or not?
So normally on there?
Well, normally, normally any, anything that's applied to the application that's down the road in any sense usually needs to be put in the notes on the Mylar because this is actually what gets recorded. This is, this is what's going to be recorded.
Right. Actually, what's for others?
I don't recall seeing.
It's your call. It doesn't matter to me either way. I mean, I, I'm not going to issue the permit without that particular thing being in the.
Yeah, the building permits would be a different issue. And if he transfers it without the easement, it's basically an illegal transfer.
All right, so we'll just.
Up easement to you or to the spot person in town? Sure, well, I'm aware, I'm aware to do that.
He wrote it with.
The idea is if you transferred it.
To the town.
To the town, that your lawyer would draft up an easement deed and the town would have to vote to accept it.
Todd. Yeah?
Uh, yep.
And the survey will have to put that on the, the Mylar or.
I think we're just gonna sign.
No, we're gonna do it with the, we're gonna do it with the deed when the deed's recorded, we'll have it, as long as it's all recorded.
We have just one Mylar, or do we want to do a paper?
He gave, yeah, he gave me one paper and one Mylar.
If we can.
Want to run a paper across?
Sure, we'll put that on.
That he stamped.
Yep.
Sure, the Mylar is stamped and there's one paper one that's stamped with his seal.
Stamped?
Yeah, that's what he, he said I should have.
Stamped. There you go.
One of each.
Today's three, four.
Also, I'm not finding in the backlot ordinance any time limitation on recording. So, um, the Mylar's got to go to the Hall of Records and be recorded. And when you come for a building permit, I will need to see the, that it's been recorded book and page in the Andersgoggin County. Just so you know, all right, it's, it's a requirement that it be recorded.
Okay, and this one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, this one will stay with me in the office.
Without the easement. Till I sell.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Regardless of what happens between now and the time you get a building permit, that needs to be recorded right away. The easement will also need to be recorded, but that can be handled when you do, when you actually get ready to pull a building permit and start exchanging property and so on.
I sell, okay, so I take this, yeah?
Free to come in and talk to me tomorrow about it if there's some confusion. All right. And we can, we can kind of get to an agreed understanding of what you need to do.
All right, wow.
Thanks, you bet.
Thank you.
Wow.
Well, thank you.
You did it.
Don't lose that Mylar.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well. We are approved. Well. While we do have some time, does everybody feel okay with, uh, going through the burnums? Without having this, the material sent to read before the meeting? We need extra time now to look through your stuff.
Well, I think first we should talk about whether we.
Are gonna accept it.
Can consider it.
Well, absolutely.
And if we can, whether we will consider it.
This is why I bring it up.
So I think typically under Robert's rules, you can only reconsider something at the next session, which would have been our February session. We're now in March.
You mean reconsidering the, um, what?
Reconsidering a vote that we took.
The ordinance is fairly clear on the time considerations for, the time constraints for reconsideration.
So I'm not sure we can consider it, um, I understand Mr. Sonberg's position, but we did have the February meeting as well, so you had all of January to get that information to us too.
But it does take quite a bit of time to find someone a soil scientist specialist to write the report to do the information, scientific evaluation.
Sure, but that wasn't even brought up at the February meeting, so there was no request that we hold off reconsider that vote to hold it off. It was. There was, there was nothing at the February meeting unfortunately.
Was that the meeting where I was present?
Yes.
Because we did ask you to reconsider at that point verbally.
Not the soils.
Not the soil.
Well, you folks, I think, I'm quite sure, there was no reconsideration of the landscaping part. That was, that was, that was a, we sat up at this hearing, I'm quite sure.
Yes.
We didn't, I didn't file a formal motion of quads, which we.
No.
But the hulls thrust that it was. Heard of us.
So I think, as I recall the conversation, it was, can we reconsider sort of the entire thing? And there was no new evidence to be presented at that point. I don't recall anyone saying, you know, we've got a soil scientist on hand, he's busy working on it, can't be here tonight. And we had already decided on those. We didn't see any basis for reconsidering the application as a whole and our decisions as a whole. So that's, that's where I come down.
I think it's true that we did not have the experts' report ready. It's a three-page report, so.
I'd have to agree, it's a little late in the game to be, to be considering something we've already voted on. We can take a look at her, at their landscape plan.
Yeah, I think that's the piece that we've left open.
Yeah.
Say, that's what I anticipated, that that was the piece that we left open and, and we had already, voted on the, the soil part after quite a bit of discussion.
Yeah.
And, you know, I wasn't anticipating until I saw the, the email that Paul sent us, that you sent Paul, that there was a soil report coming, but we had already cleared that issue, so.
Can I, can I just add, I mean, you know, you asked me for documentation. I got you the documentation. You said, you know, and I'm just not sure how you came to your decision, other than common sense. I mean, I have common sense. You know, I wasn't going to argue with your common sense. I have an expert's opinion now. You know, this is my well, you know, and I am very concerned and, you know. For you guys not to even look at it, evaluate it, for what it's worth? I mean, that's, that doesn't seem right to me.
Well, well, what we have complies with code. If, if something happens out beyond, you know, if something happens to your water, it becomes a code issue, you know? He's far, he's far enough away from your well, you know, so that it's. If it happened, if something happened to happen, then.
So you're, you're just, so the, the whole decision here is based on, well, nothing's going to happen until it happens, and then my well's contaminated, I have cancer, or, and then we have to, you know, do this kind of thing? I mean, I don't understand.
So I think two, we're talking about two different things. One, Todd's right, if he violates any environmental ordinances, our ordinance, any state laws, that's an issue to deal with, that we can't deal with here. We approve this application expecting that he will follow all laws and regulations. So that, that's sort of one question. The other question is, is with, what we base our decision on? And we base, we have to base our decision on, we don't go out and investigate, we don't, we can go get our own soil scientist, but we don't have to. So we base it on what, what you brought to us. And in the January meeting, you were represented by another attorney.
True.
And, and you didn't have any information, and that's.
Well, again, that was from Christmas Eve to January, right?
Yep, so let me finish. So you didn't have any information there. I get it. And we said if, if you, so we based our decisions on the information that we had in front of us, which was what the applicants presented.
And what did they present about that?
So they told us that the water flowed away from the property.
They know the water flows away from the property.
We didn't, we didn't, you, you know, we specifically asked your attorney, do you have any difference?
Wouldn't my attorney know either? I mean, that's the thing.
I mean, and you didn't say anything either. So that's, so that's January.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
And then February, we still don't have any specific information from you.
It's March, I have it now.
Which is at least a month too late, and that's the problem.
Month too late, okay.
And if you had, but even if you had said in February, I've hired a soil scientist, he's working on it, we could have, I'm not saying we would have, but we at least had the right to reconsider it at that point.
We could have had that discussion.
Yes.
And we didn't have that information till no discussion about whether to delay a final vote on, on that piece of it. If that's where you stand, that's where you stand.
Well, what they have follows our code, follows all our ordinances.
Okay.
Beyond that, you know, there's nothing we can do beyond that.
It's our right to be able to have a home occupation.
They do have a right.
And as long as you follow the code, you're, it's our given right.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, has anybody, everybody's had a chance to take a look at this plant list? Uh, I'm not an arborist, so what are these?
For spruce and hemlock. We removed, after talking to a expert on it, the arborvitae so that we wouldn't be replacing them because of the deer in the area.
Do you have deer?
Yeah. But yeah, we, you know, after talking to this gentleman, he highly recommended just sticking with the plants that are already grown there and, you know, adding to. It's a scale drawing, so you can see that it's a hundred feet. And, um, I think that that's plenty adequate.
So the.
And this is going to block the view of both the house and the garage. And just so that there's none, you know, any visual whatsoever. If I have to, we can build a fence, if that's what it takes. But I think the landscaping, um, is easy enough to do with what Skilins recommended.
Well, I hope it doesn't take offense, because I don't like fences. Fences between neighbors. Um, so the one on the front here, the, well, beside the garage.
Yeah.
Just looking at five large trees, five large, reasonably large.
Yeah, those are, um, white spruce. He wanted to use stuff that had fuller branches that wouldn't grow tall and then be sparse on the bottom. So we stuck with, I believe, spruce.
These are balsam.
These are balsam, yeah, that's the fir, I believe. Yeah, fir spruce along the front.
Fir spruce, hmm.
And then between the two properties, he added some hemlock, as well as fir spruce. And this is what was recommended because of the size of the trees and the spacings and whatnot.
What size trees were you explaining?
Lucky didn't put that on here.
He did scale the drawing.
The drawing is scaled, right, but we didn't actually, um, get into that because we were doing it via email, and he came by the house once and looked around and, and then, um, yeah, we didn't discuss whether they were going to be five or six or, or seven foot exactly, because I think you have to kind of go with what's available, like when you're purchasing them. I didn't want to say, oh, we're going to get ten-foot trees and show up and the nursery only has seven-foot trees, you know? So.
What's the timing on planting these?
As soon as possible.
Provided that white stuff leaves any time soon.
Look at that. So August, July, yeah, August.
Ideally with the area, it's kind of, um, you know, we don't want to commit to June because the ground is still cold and wet.
Mud.
Hard at this point to say.
I thought I saw a six-month plan for, um, I thought I saw in the ordinance that you had six months to do the buffer and landscape, to comply and whatnot. And I think that would be August and would be definitely done by then. We could probably fence the entire property by then, if that's what it takes.
So I think we're looking at Article Eight, Section One, right? Buffer, Mitchie, buffer.
Correct.
What page is that on?
And then the F as well.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, and the F is on fifty-three.
Landscaping. Oh.
And fifty-three, so. So these are all evergreen species?
They are, yes. On, also on page forty-two, um, G one also has some, this is where the six-month requirement comes into play. Landscaping will be, be completed within six months of completion of any structure. An applicant for any use requiring a permit pursuant to this ordinance shall ensure that all buffer vegetation shall remain alive for at least one year from the date of planting. And shall guarantee as a condition a reapproval, replacement of any material which may have died before the expiration of the year. And replanted will also be guaranteed for a year.
Is that something you would normally go out and check?
Yep, yeah, I'll be required to, to check it. The, the only particulars of the site that might be an issue for this is that it's, that, the groundwater's fairly close, but all three species are very tolerant for that.
Yeah, they're tolerant, a little bit. It should grow well.
Yep, they should do all right on the site.
Well, any other input on the board?
Mr. Sundberg, do you have a position on the plan?
We do, yes. If I may, uh, could we use that easel maybe, because I think he's got some, we brought a gentleman here who has some expertise on it, and it might be visible to see.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, what's the best place to?
Right over here, so they.
Yeah, yep.
Should we sit up here again, sir? So if I, if I could, without making too many noises, I'll introduce him and then talk to you about what he knows. Are you ready to go?
Yeah.
Why don't you tell these folks what your name is and what you do professionally and what your qualifications are?
Well, I am a main licensed landscape architect. My name's David Trusdel. Um, I work with Terry Dewan, Terry Dewan Associates in Hyrum. And I put together a quick plan. I don't know if you guys can see this, if you want to.
Are you licensed in any particular way?
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a professional main licensed landscape architect.
So what are we looking at here?
So we're looking at a couple of things. Um, we'll break it into sections maybe. So we've talked about the Skilins proposal, and I think you're right, you see, it's, you know, they're all evergreens, they're all applying choices to the, to the location. The fact that the sizes aren't on there yet is a question. We have to, you know, there's obviously quite a range of what you could actually specify and purchase and buy. So what I had put together is, on the left side, we'll talk a little bit about kind of the site itself, kind of existing conditions through, uh, kind of history over the last few years, based on some, uh, you know, publicly available Google Earth imagery of the site.
Why don't you do that now? Why don't you start with the, the first picture, which shows the pre-cutting?
Well, so basically, um, and I have smaller copies of these I can pass around as well, but I'll go over it first.
That would be good.
These, um, this is a Google aerial from May eighteenth of twenty twelve. This one is September twenty thirteen, and this one is September of twenty fourteen. This, these are just what anybody, any of us would see if you go to Google and look through the images. Basically, what, what we're pointing out here, uh, you can see the dash lines for the Sundberg and the Burnham property. You can see Sundberg residence, uh, Burnham residence, the garage, um, and the, the full, full site. So this green line represents roughly, uh, the, the clearing for the residential piece of the Burnham property in twenty twelve, May of twenty twelve, which was roughly two, two acres to scale. This is the, the photo that was taken in September twenty thirteen, you know, a year and a half after this one. And you can roughly see, um, close to eight-ish acres of clearing.
Can I ask a question? Was there, was there wooded area between the two properties in twenty twelve?
Well, you can see it if you look closely. Um, this, the dash line is clearly the, the property line between the two. You can see the existing, uh, tree cover.
And can you describe what that was from your knowledge of these kind of photographs?
Well, uh, green tree cover, it's a mix of, a mixed evergreen forest essentially.
Was it thickly covered with trees?
Well, you, it's, it's thickly covered, uh, in the aerial, and you can see from also, these are also Google air, Google images as well. This is the, the, they call it Google Street View. You may have heard of the Google Street View. This was the street view in, in twenty twelve, essentially around, within a month of when this aerial was taken. And so, yes, you can see, you can see the, the residence and the garage and kind of the, the full, kind of forest on this side, which, which is represented here.
So once the garage was put up, did something happen to the trees between the two properties?
Well, I can't say for sure. They all, you know, the only, I know, just like any, you know, these images all came from Google. If we're talking about that building there, which is, I believe, the garage, there it is again, sorry. You can see the difference in the tree cover between.
What's the difference? What happened?
Well, there was a, about. Well, there was about two acres of clearing at that point, and at this point it was eight, and you can kind of see the, the edge of where, you can see a few trees left within that, that big green blob there, but, um, you can see that most of that was, was cleared out.
So is it fair to say that after the garage was put up, somebody clear cut the area around between the two properties?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I wouldn't, you can't say clear cut, there, there are a couple of trees left in there in the middle, but yeah, it's, it's, there's quite a few trees that were taken out.
Dave, would you say the trees between my property and their property in two thousand twelve, were those living trees or were they dead trees?
Probably living, I mean, they're green in the, in the image, but.
I would say, yeah.
So can I ask a question? Photo one A, that looks like fall, it looks like a lot of hardwoods. Is that, yeah?
Hmm.
Yeah, thi- this is literally, it's just, it was taken from Google, I mean, it just happens to be when it was taken, when the Google car drove by.
Right, but I guess my question is, those trees, it looks like they're bare, so they're not evergreens, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the trees are seen right here, God, sorry.
It's not the best easel, sorry.
The bottom photograph actually indicates a sort of mix of hardwood and softwood pretty reasonably because it, this hardwood has started to color.
And can I add that all of the image shows that we stayed well away from our property line and that we did not cut any of Mr. Sonberg's trees?
Well, and I don't think that's what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, I know, that's not, not our issue.
So what are your thoughts about, um, what their proposal is and what you think would be required under the ordinance to adequately buffer from, from ground floor and second story, uh, the properties?
Well, um, according, I think it's the article you mentioned, it was paragraph.
Mm-hmm, the buffer area B.
Yeah, I copied some of that language on here just because it just still was, it could be in, in one place, but, um, essentially in the, I think one B and maybe the second paragraph down, it starts with the word screening shall be. Screening shall be defined as eliminating any view to humans standing at ground level of residential use. I don't have, I don't think I have to read the rest of that, but that's pretty clear, you know, any what, any humans standing at the ground level of this residence should not be able to see any of the commercial use.
So what's required to accomplish that?
So what's required, what I did here, um, I took the Skilins proposal that we looked at, which was, um, submitted about a week ago, we're gonna have to go. And it is to scale, that's right. Um, the only thing it doesn't show, uh, is what's happening on the other side. It shows the building, the Burnham garage. Um, it shows trees spaced twelve feet on center, um, roughly a hundred foot length of trees. Um, but it doesn't show how that necessarily relates to the, the, the Sunberg property. And so what I did was I, I literally, I took what's represented in green here, these green dots are that exact plan to scale. Um, and essentially I kind of drew this view shed corridor. Um, this is a, this is a fifty-scale drawing, so from the Sunberg residence, basically took the corner of each, you know, the, the corner of the building itself. Drew a view shed to where the, um, commercial garage building is. Including, according to the ordinance, any use which, which would be parking and unloading and all those things. So basically, uh, you can see the kind of angle of, of view shed, dropped in to scale those nine trees. And the, the first thing you can begin to see is, uh, there's a little bit of a gap showing where these orange dots happened, so. Uh, tree height aside, even if these trees were, you know, fifty feet tall to kind of totally cover the view, you'd still have a, a sort of a sliver of, uh, twenty or thirty feet on this left-hand side that would potentially have a view of that, that edge of the building. Um, and so. That roughly explains what this plan diagram is. If we can jump quickly to this, the section diagram, you can see this, section A, A one. To scale basically showing Sunberg residence, Burnham garage, Sunberg residence, Burnham garage, the top section, um, kind of coincides with the, the twenty twelve image. So basically showing the property line, showing the exist, at that point existing trees, um, and, uh, the one below is basically where we are today. Same scale, you can see the Sunberg residence, you can see the trees on the Sunberg property, then you hit the line and as you said, you, you hadn't pushed into the Sunberg property, but, you know, quite close to the edge. And, uh, this little green view shed here is essentially showing, okay, according to the, the language in the ordinance, any human viewing that building, um, you know. Roughly a twenty to twenty-five foot height would be needed to essentially fill that, uh, gap within the trees that's, that's been left over. Um, and, and so for reference, what I've shown here is, you know, an eight to ten foot tall evergreen. Just for reference, just to say, hey, if we want an eight, eight-foot tall, um, tree, you know, it, it clearly wouldn't, wouldn't, uh.
So what is, what's required in order to meet the standards of the ordinance for a planting?
Well, there's a little bit more work that would need to be done to truly confirm that. I think it would be as simple as, as going out and using, um, you know, one of those surveyor's rods. You probably see those things all the time, it's, you know, the guy's doing a survey, it's like a red and white sort of stake, stick. And, you know, for someone to stand here on, on, on the Sunberg's porch, a surveyor standing there with a rod, literally see how tall it is, I mean, it's, 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 it's the next step, it would have to be confirmed. Uh, this twenty to twenty-five foot is a, is a, is a range, but to, before, you know, plants were purchased and finalized and whether, I, I showed this orange sort of berm there. Whether a berm is potentially needed to help get a little bit more height to, to get those trees planted, um.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, how tall does a normal eastern hemlock get?
Oh, uh, fifty to seventy.
And how long does it take to grow?
That's, well.
So if you start with a ten-foot tree?
Yeah.
How many years till it's twenty feet?
I mean, you could, you could, you could roughly say twelve to eighteen inches a year.
Twelve foot a year.
Yeah.
On a hemlock?
Yeah.
On a balsam?
Yeah.
Really?
Very similar, but, you know, the, 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 the larger you go, when you start out, of course, the slower they, the slower the growth rate. You know, you start with a six to eight-foot tree, it'll grow a little bit faster, but of course you're only starting with a six to eight-foot tree and that's, it's not gonna do much here. So yeah, maybe you start with a ten, it'll grow a little slower, but still it's, you know, a foot a year is another ten years before a ten-foot tree becomes twenty feet, which may still not even cover the view.
What do your orange dots represent?
The orange dots represent, uh, one potential option. Um, these four orange dots here just simply say, if you get the, if these trees were tall enough off the bat, we'd still need another four trees in addition to those nine to.
Yeah.
Fill the view. These are just saying, you know, with a little bit more work and confirming actual final grades and getting a surveyor out there to actually see, is there a need to actually have more trees up, up, um, in this location to help even kind of close the gap between the rest of the tree that's, as they're standing on the edge there?
Is, is it your belief that the nine trees proposed there would not be sufficient to meet the ordinance standards?
Yes, that's, yeah, no, I, I do not think that they would. The, the, the ordinance is very, very, uh, specific.
And are you also saying that without doing the surveyor's work, uh, you can't give an opinion right now as to roughly what would satisfy the ordinance?
Well, no, I, I, I do think roughly we could say twenty to twenty-five feet, but I can't, I can't confirm that.
Twenty to twenty.
Twenty to twenty-five feet, you would need.
How many trees?
Oh.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen trees at twenty to twenty-five feet, um, could, could, could probably do the job, but it would need to be surveyed and finalized. Whether a berm, you know, two, three, four, five more feet needed to, to give it a little bit more additional.
So a minimum total, how many trees would you say at that height?
Fourteen. No, I'm sorry, thirteen, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, nine plus four.
At a height of what?
Twenty to twenty-five feet.
So there's, there's no buffer there now?
Yeah, there's a natural buffer there. As the law, as the ordinance says, where no natural vegetation can be maintained or due to varying site conditions.
This is all tree on his property and then there's some.
It shows right here in his description that there's at least ten to twenty feet of our natural vegetation that's there existing.
And I have to add that the same view.
It is.
Because they're big old trees, we have the same exact view of his property that we did before the property was cut.
And the ordinance also says at ground level, not standing on Mr. Sonberg's porch, okay?
Well, it actually says, or from the windows of a two-story building.
Yeah, which, you know, I didn't, I don't got any of the.
Right, but those, but there's huge trees there.
But then also his. His drawing doesn't even deplete the ground, um.
Was your question about whether there's a buffer there now?
Yeah, I was wondering if there was a natural buffer there now.
Yeah.
There is, there is a natural, there are trees within a buffer that do not eliminate a view from humans through the building.
That's what I asked.
We thought the smaller trees would fill in because there, there's huge trees there now that would fill in the second story. There's fifty, seventy-five foot, whatever, huge trees. There's so many evergreens there now that the lower trees, that's why I wanted fir and spruce stuff to stay smaller. The pines would be nice because they're full when they're little, but I was told as they get bigger, they drop their lower branches. We'd be in the same predicament that we are right now looking at his lights.
Well, you know, I mean, we wouldn't be having this problem if we had all those trees that were cut down between your garage and my house.
Oh, that's, it's on their land.
That, that's fine, but, you know.
Yeah, they have a right to do it.
But now they have a right to put it back.
So the, the section drawings at the top, you're showing kind of around the property line, it looks like a dip?
Yeah.
And is that, is that, how did you confirm that based on aerial?
Hmm.
This is, there's information, there's, there are ten-foot contours available with the main GIS, you know, with, with only, uh, since the twenty-third to review this, we didn't have enough time to get a surveyor out there and really confirm the final, you know, one-foot contours.
But that's based on images or data that's not on, not on here?
Right.
So you could, so you just.
Not in these, not in, depicted in these pictures as well.
Put the dip in there.
Yeah, the dip is, the dip is an interpolation of what, of what we know is, you know, on the site, it's not a final, this is what I, this is why I said it's a, it's about twenty to twenty-five feet. We need to get a surveyor out there to confirm that, um, this is.
So this isn't a site survey, this is just a Google survey, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So if we added more, three or four more trees at the end there? Being that there's already natural buffer there? How, how do you arrive at having to go twenty-five feet high? How do you know there's not already natural buffer there that's gonna take care of that?
I mean, um, as far as a photo of the existing, would that help to?
Well, is it?
Basically the bu- the, there's a bu- there are trees and, but I, I guess what's your definition, definition of a buffer, I mean, you can see through the trees. You can see through the bottom of the trees and is it, is it twenty to twenty-five, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, but.
Yeah.
It's a long ways through there too.
Can you see the garage from my, from my house?
Yes.
Can you see the bottom of the garage or the top of the garage?
You can see from the bottom to the roof.
Okay.
But we are very much done, yeah, that's why you see the.
So are you saying with some confidence that the standards of the ordinance would be met if the plantings were trees that were twenty to twenty-five feet high and approximately fourteen of them?
Yeah, yeah.
And that what they've offered is not going to be the job?
Well, maybe they could berm up some.
Definitely plant more and build a berm.
So, um, do you have an opinion on the appropriateness of the species they've chosen?
Yes, I think they're fine. Uh, uh, it's a fine selection. I like that there's a variety and they're all, uh, absolutely.
Okay.
Low branch and pattern, as you said, I mean, it's all, yeah, it's, it's.
A little indigenous.
Yeah.
They're the right trees for the location.
Yeah, definitely.
So if you plant the trees that were, say, five feet tall, how long would it take to block the view? How many years would it take?
Well, if we go by, you know, by the foot, foot a year, to get to twenty feet, fifteen years.
So let me ask you, to what height, so you're saying if you stand on the ground level, you can see the top of the garage?
And the bottom, yeah, you can see, you can see, you can see.
So let me ask you if they planted trees that are eight feet in height, they, what would you still be able to see? Assuming they planted the fourteen trees you're proposing eight feet in height, what would you be able to see from Mr. Sonberg's ground floor?
Hmm, it, it's hard to explain, just.
So, I mean, you're looking at the garage, are you seeing ten feet up the garage? Are you seeing only at the top of the roof? Or what are you, what are you seeing?
I, I think that's what we need to confirm by just literally it's getting a surveyor out there with a rod and, you know, if someone's standing there with a rod and says, okay, this is where eight feet is. And you can kind of, you know, look above that and, you know, it's, I wish I could say.
I mean, you don't have a guess for me? Is it ten feet? Is it, I mean, how high is the garage?
Thirty, thirty feet.
Certainly the second, from the second floor of his house, you'd be able to see the garage.
Well, just from the ground level, you, it's like eye level to the foundation, so, um, and in between my house and their garage, it's like a valley. That's why, you know, in order to obstruct that view, you know, I mean, at least twenty feet is like, I don't know if that's even gonna block it, but it certainly is a lot better than eight feet.
Well, but that doesn't quite answer my question. And maybe the answer is you can't answer my question, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I wouldn't be able to without going out there with you and getting Rod out there and saying that's how much to see.
The, the, the buffering shall be sufficient to minimize the impacts of any kind of potential use such as loading and unloading, outdoor storage, vehicle parking, mineral extraction, waste collection and disposal area. That doesn't mean you can't see his roof.
So, um.
If you expect not to see the roof of his garage, you know, I, I just. If, if it's gonna minimize the impact of loading and unloading operations and outdoor storage areas, it doesn't say that you have to screen the roof.
Well, this, I would say the foundation of that house is at eye level to where I live.
According to Google Maps, the foundation of his, of his garage is eleven feet lower than the foundation of your.
Well, when I look, I mean, it's eye level, it appears to be eye level.
Yeah, I understand, okay.
But by his layout there, you're trying to screen everything including the roof of this garage. I, I think that goes a little.
So why don't we?
Goes a little too far.
Why don't we, if there are any more factual questions we have for these folks and, and applicants, why don't we do that and then we can, because it's our job to interpret the ordinance, so maybe then we can talk about what you think needs to happen.
I just have one sort of closing comment, and it seems to me under the ordinance, two things. Number one, you have to not be able to see it from the second floor of his house. Um, and two, it's their burden to come before you and demonstrate that what they've provided, which is nine trees of no height that they've stipulated to, will actually do the job.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, perhaps you're, you know, one possible decision you might have is to wait until we can all get a surveyor out there and get the kind of scientific evidence that you're gonna need to actually know what it's gonna take. Right now, if they've satisfied your burden by saying there'll be nine trees and we're not guaranteeing what height they'll be, but there they are. Uh, I, I think that's not gonna meet the burden of proof that they have to demonstrate that when he's upstairs in his house, he won't be able to see this thing. So that's all, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're all set, are you done with whatever you have?
Oh, how tall is your house, do you have?
How tall is it? It's a two-story house, I mean, I don't.
Two-story, cape?
I'm not sure if it's a cape or. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to let the applicants?
Yes, please. Why, why don't you come up, run.
So, um.
What can we do?
How tall are the trees that you're gonna plant? I think that's, that's the missing piece that we need to decide. This is, um, we do need to know how tall they are that you guys are willing to commit to plant.
We will purchase the largest ones that we can get. When I, um, hired this man to make the, the map, he, you know, was happy to do it and didn't. He scaled it, I don't know why he didn't set a height. I think it was because of availability. And so, um, we're happy to add four more trees and plant them, you know, purchase whatever is available. If we need eight-foot trees or ten-foot trees, we will get those.
Okay, so, um, you'll add the four trees at the end and commit to ten-foot trees?
Sure.
Or ten-foot high trees, whether they're on a berm or whatnot, right?
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest.
I was gonna suggest putting in a four-foot berm or so and then planting the smaller trees that are gonna grow faster, opposed to buying older trees that are gonna sit there.
So four for berm?
Is that adequate, four feet, do you think? I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, you know, the question is, I mean, like it's been, already said that my shot is the bottom of the foundation is eleven feet below already. So, that's eleven plus eight, that's eighteen feet, I mean, tw- twenty-one feet should be, should be adequate, so.
And at this point, I just wanna know what you're committing to or proposing to plant.
Sure.
Here, so if you're telling us four-foot berm and six-foot trees, then that's what we'll base our decision on. If you're telling us, you know.
If it's ten feet to the top of the tree.
However, that's accomplished.
That's correct.
And I originally was going to do the twelve arborvitae, like five-foot arborvitae for the screening and was recommended not to do that and to do the larger, more indigenous, is that the right word? Species that would be survivors in that area.
I don't mind feeding deer, but not just with trees.
Yeah, yeah, it's an expensive hobby.
Yeah.
Feeding the deer.
A hundred dollar snack per tree.
Gets expensive.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
So just to back into this, you're adding four, uh, the trees you're gonna buy are ten feet?
The, the trees that will be planted will be ten feet, not ten feet tall.
Okay.
Whether there's a six-foot berm or four-foot berm, they'll be ten feet tall from.
Okay.
To the top of the tree.
And that was four more trees along the hundred feet, okay.
Done.
I wanna add them on this map to see what I'm agreeing to.
So I, I wrote down ten feet to the top of trees, whether it's tree or berm that gets you to ten feet? That's what I'm understanding you're proposing. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, do I hear a motion?
Well, let's, um. Yeah, first I wanna talk about what we think the ordinance actually requires. So as I read the ordinance, it says no industrial or commercial buildings or uses should be established in or about a residential use unless the landscape buffer strip is provided to visually screen the building or uses. I think that means the building exists, so it's not being established, it's the use that's being established. So as I read the ordinance, and you guys can disagree with me, I think we need to screen the use, not the entire building.
Mm-hmm, agree.
So does that mean like when trucks are coming in to the garage, that would be the use part of it? And the whole distance of the trucks coming in with towing or hauling the broken down vehicles would have to be screened? Because that's the use?
Yep, so we talked about, and I think you're.
Loading and unloading operation.
Do you want small ones to pass around?
That's even easier, thank you.
While she's looking, can I just say one thing? I talked to him and any size tree can be purchased, just depends on what the style.
Is there an extra one?
I can't trade here. I've got an extra one here if anyone needs one. You want one?
How tall is the garage?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four?
To the feet, it's twenty-four feet.
Quote me by eight, so it wasn't like seventeen, it was ten-foot, so.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
I think I put twenty-seven in the application.
It's been a while since I built it.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It says the buffer shouldn't impact the use and not the whole building.
So what that ordinance says is that the usage is what needs to be buffered, not the.
Oh, what the ordinance, what they're interpreting, Ann is, is trying to interpret the ordinance to say, which I would agree with, is that what's being established at this time under this permit is what needs to be screened. If you were building the building now, that would be different.
That would be a different question.
This building's existed for several years according to the evidence provided, um, by Mr. Sundberg, uh, expert. Uh, through the, there's a three-year period there that the building is already there. So, uh, according to the ordinance, um, and I would agree with Ann's interpretation because the building is pre-existing, that the activity is what the screening actually needs to, um, to cover.
Sure.
So therefore they added four trees on the end wouldn't be necessary?
No, it would according to the drawing, I would agree that the four trees would be required.
You're still using it, using that area.
But the first fifty feet wouldn't be necessary because that's to buffer our home, not the garage.
Well, but if you look at the, at the angle, so you're gonna have to buffer it. This is basically the area you're gonna be using.
Okay.
So that's gonna have to be buffered, so that's still a pretty good.
Right, so they added four trees.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So just doing math, which, uh, if we bisect that angle in half that we have on the fib- on the top piece, uh, twenty to twenty-five foot tree will screen twenty-seven feet, and I know these are all approximate, I get it. Um, then a ten to twelve and a half foot tree should screen thirteen and a half feet up the side of the garage.
Nice, she does math too.
I like the idea of the berm, we're just planting on this map here.
Well, probably help the trees grow too.
Yeah, get them out of the clay.
Yeah.
I don't know, dirt can be expensive too.
Oh, you're pointing at it.
Yeah, it's made every day.
So you're looking at that, Ann, as thirteen and a half feet being. Uh, yeah, so if, if twenty to twenty-five would screen to the top of the garage, which is twenty-seven, ten to twelve and a half would screen thirteen and a half feet up.
Screen, screen the use.
Provided that the both places were at ground level, like.
Yeah, I mean, according to his drawing, and we all understand there, there's fuzziness built into that.
Sure.
Um, I get that, um, and I'm guessing, I mean, how tall is a tow truck?
Yeah, can't be any more than fourteen feet, right?
Well, the typical flatbed is seven feet to the top of the cab, plus the car sitting in the back. If the bed is at three feet and the car is at five, that's eight or nine feet, I think that would be reasonable, right? Most stuff isn't done by tow truck anymore, it's all done by flatbed. So that might be maybe ten feet.
Maybe. It would certainly be under the soffit of your garage. Below the soffit of your garage.
Yeah.
For the use.
Yeah.
It would have to be because it won't fit in your door.
That's right.
And you guys, um, you're not, the parking will occur, basically if you look at this cone that he's drawn.
Yeah.
Uh, the parking's not gonna occur outside of that. So this, this area is a riding ring, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. That's a personal use over there, yeah.
A crooked riding ring.
I told you that, we needed one more post there and you didn't believe me. Proves it right there.
I know.
Look at it from our, out of our house and straight as can be.
It looks perfectly straight, it does, but aerial view just.
It's because the driveway's bent.
You wonder why your horse has just left.
They do, I have.
Horses lean towards the green bag.
That's true too. I have this left problem when I.
So you think it's not the building, but the use of the building that has to be screened?
Yes.
Well, the language of screening shall be defined as eliminating any views to humans standing at ground level of the residence from any window of a two-story building within such location, doesn't it say?
Right below that, it says.
First, first paragraph does.
And think about what you're talking about, you know, you're larger than a rural area. The purpose of this is so that when you go upstairs or something, you don't see a business operation right next to you.
Well, but the purpose of this is that when a business operation is established, you're screening whatever that new, whatever's coming on your property. So that garage has included it as a, so the new thing is the business use of it. So the commercial vehicle, you know, the vehicle's coming in for commercial service.
And it does include buildings or uses, not buildings and uses. The language is fairly specific in either or as determining the impact, in my opinion.
But when I, when I chatted with him just a second ago, he said that the fourteen trees would suffice if they were the right size. If they're not of the right size, then fourteen trees has completely done.
So what's the right test?
Well, that, yeah, that, that's what needs to be confirmed, twenty to twenty-five feet, uh, based on, based on my initial analysis of what we use.
Right, but that was to screen to the top of the garage.
The whole screen, the whole garage.
And it, right now, we're at the place where that's not required. What's required is screening the vehicles coming in and out and the activity that's going on on the property, so.
I would still say.
Your math is better than mine.
Sure.
But, you know, I bisected that angle.
Yeah, yeah.
And so if you cut down the trees or you.
Yeah.
Have the trees and you have the height, half the size of the trees that you've proposed, the twenty, twenty-five feet, should screen up to thirteen and a half feet on the bar, on the garage, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't follow that.
So, I just drew, I just drew a line up the middle of your, your angle here, right? So if twenty to twenty-five foot trees take you here, half of that angle should be twelve and a half feet, right? Twelve and a half foot trees, ten to twelve and a half foot trees. So if the twenty to twenty-five foot trees took you to the top, and we know the top is twenty-seven feet, then half of that should take you to thirteen and a half, right?
Yeah, although I, the whole purpose of that, and I would call it a diagram because it's, it's definitely not, is to, that, that needs to be confirmed. That just, you know, I, I, you would wanna go out there and just confirm what that height really is. It's, it'd be a quick thing, I mean, it's not, y- y- you'd hate to sit here today and say ten feet's fine and then realize, man, you're missing four feet and four feet can be a big, big deal.
You're missing ten feet.
Or ten feet or fifteen feet or whatever it is.
So do you guys think we have enough information to decide whether ten-foot whatever, um, is sufficient to screen the use?
I don't know. It seems, seems to me the diagram shows it pretty well.
I asked him, can I just say, I asked him how does the snow have to all melt before you can actually get the information to you folks? He says you can go out there right now and do it.
Well, you know, what I was explaining, we could take a surveyor's rod if we have in our office, go out there, stand there. See where the twenty-five foot mark is and see if it would do the job. You know, you'd have to have, you'd have to have a fourteen-foot tow truck and the, and the use to sort of make sure that you cover that, but it's all.
But we're determined, it's not twenty-five. It's not necessary.
Yeah, so what if we? What if we? Um, what if we made the application conditional on Paul going out and confirming that a ten-foot tree will screen? Because we don't, honestly, the thirteen and a half feet, I don't think we, I don't think we need that much screening even. I think we need to, you know, if a tow truck is seven feet, I think we need seven or eight or nine feet screening.
Besides the fact the majority of the activity is taking place on the two sides of the garage that don't face the abutters property. Yeah, that's true.
But we do, we have, you know, if cars are parked in front, we have an obligation to make sure that those are screened.
I'm with you on that.
Um. So what do you guys think about making that a condition?
Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you want me to do, that's what I'll do, I'll do it to the best I can, um. As long as we're clear about what it is, I'm supposed to.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll need to make this so it's what our standards are clear. I'd say that it'd be nice if the proprietors got together and agreed, but I'm guessing that's not gonna happen.
And we've already said that.
I think we've had that conversation.
But we did, it didn't go far.
Can I ask a couple of questions on the landscape architect? And what, what, what do you estimate the cost would be to go to Mr. Sundberg's yard and do a shot to the barn, to the garage at that twelve-foot height? And then do a shot at the location of the trees to determine how high they need to be? What, what do you, would you, give me a ballpark idea, you're gonna spend a couple of hours out there doing it?
Oh, if, if I were to do it, yeah.
If you were doing it?
Yeah, if I were to do that in a couple of hours, sure, it'd be a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
Or if you'd get a, you know, you can also get a professional surveyor to do it even faster than I could and I can't confirm how much that would cost.
Well, but you're the expert here and this is what you were saying would be the, would be, um, you know, the determinant option. So, I mean, my, my, the only reason I'm hesitating before the board here is because I'm not sure that I have the proper material to make, to do, to shoot the site and feel sufficient in, in what I would have to stand on as far as that's concerned.
Well, I'm thinking it'll mostly be a referee.
Okay, I'm guessing that's the case too, so I'm gonna go out with padding on both sides.
I think that client would be willing to pay for that cost to get that done to present to the board.
And I would like to be, um, I would like a requisite to that to be that I'd be present for that too. I would go out and meet them when they do that.
Well, and I think the challenge here is we want, we want your screening and we want it to be adequate for how we've interpreted the ordinance, but we've already held this application up for three months now, this is our third time back here. So that's our, um, that's why I, I'm not sure how we craft it, but that's why I'd like to make it a condition of the permit rather than requiring it to come back here.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I was hoping to do that last month.
So if we were to make the condition of approval that I meet the abutters representative out there at the time they're going to shoot the elevations and the. time they're going to shoot the elevations and the visual elevations between what would be the proposed screened activity and Mr. Sundberg's. Um, yard. And to make a determination from that, the extent of the height of the buffering that's necessary. And can we give that a plus or minus? I mean, they, the ordinance allows this.
Tree will grow.
The trees to grow in in a year or two, and if it's eighteen inches a year, can we be within two or three feet of that with what they're able to get, or? It's a little hard to know too, if Skilens has availability of, I mean, you can certainly go to a landscape uh, provider and buy trees that are sixty feet tall at thirty thousand dollars a shot.
Right.
I, I don't think that, I mean, but I don't think that that's the.
I think you have plenty of those.
Yeah, so.
So.
Crafting that in the, in that way, then I, yes, I would feel comfortable in overseeing that for the board.
So here's. Here's what my motion is. I move to find that the buffer and landscaping plan is presented on the condition, on the condition that fourteen trees are planted. The tree, the tops of the trees are no lower than ten feet. So that's a minimum, even if it's.
With a fourth of a burn.
If you only need six feet to screen it, I want you to plant it ten feet. So that's a minimum. That's what you propose. And that those trees are sufficient to screen the area of the garage to a height of ten feet.
The area of the garage to be at ten feet?
At ten feet from the ground level of the garage, from the.
At the garage, okay. That, that, just wanted to know where that would need, ten feet need to be measured, that's all.
Yeah, at the garage and over, you know, in this parking lot area.
Probably more in the parking lot.
Yeah, actually, it is gonna be more in the parking lot, but.
And that sits so low.
So, so the ten foot is a minimum. If Paul and everyone decides you need twelve feet trees and you're unhappy with that, you can come back. If you wanna just plant the twelve-foot trees, as far as I'm concerned, you have your conditional use permit.
Sure.
Or buffer, or, or burn it up.
Yeah, if Paul says two feet higher, lower, that's what we'll do.
Well, the determination will come from having a, yeah, alright.
So.
Jill, was that clear as mud?
Yeah.
So what that says is regardless of what the gentleman that comes out to survey it, you know, if he says there's a three, only a three-foot tree needs to be planted or whatnot, it still has to be in condition ten feet.
Ten feet, yes. You guys propose this ten feet, so the top of the tree has. Yep, top of the tree has to be ten feet.
Takes to get to the top of that tree, ten feet. You can do a nine-foot burn and a one-foot tree if you want.
We can do it.
Alright.
But they're gonna have to be full enough to.
Probably wanna do the tree.
Approximate what we've got here. So no sticks.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Wait, let me make sure that Jill.
Read it back.
Well, the other thing is, I just wanna be sure, so I would have to get on, I'd have to get on the site. I'd have to put a rod up right up next to the garage. To show their ten-foot height, you know, doing a simple trigonometry.
Yeah.
So you'll need to, you'll need to plan and get.
However the magic works.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten feet on the garage has to be screened, whatever that tree height is, minimum of ten feet.
We all promise to act like adults that day.
Definitely.
And that's condition, your motion's condition on them going out to see what it would actually take.
The motion's conditional on the, on the buffering meet a certain height above the ground level at the garage. That's what, it's not conditional on anybody shooting anything. It's just a matter of, as a verification to what that might need. On their behalf, I think that you guys working together in that way is a great idea. It ensures that your client gets as much as possible in buffering, and it ensures that the burners have a, a pretty good idea about how to try to achieve that. Without telling them they have to buy a thirty thousand dollar tree or fill in three acres of land. I, I think it's a great solution.
Alright.
Okay.
Jill, do you need help?
I think I'm, I think.
Okay, so that's my motion. It's clear as the West.
So we got a second?
A second.
Show hands.
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here for the other two meetings.
Motion carries.
Do we need a final vote on whether this application passes?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably should.
I move to find.
Your piece of paper.
Sorry. I move to find that the application be approved, subject to the conditions that we've discussed over all three meetings.
Second. Show hands.
Oh, again, abstain.
Approved.
Thank you.
I don't know why I'm moving on to move. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it very much.
Sorry.
I'm biting my lip.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna be quiet.
Because we're still on TV.
I know.
I, I get it, and I understand, and I tried to talk to him.
You're still on TV.
I don't care.
You know, I, you know, I, I do similar stuff for a living. I'm an attorney. I represent municipalities and hand rates, just neighbor fights, neighbor fights and family fights too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Families.
You did well.
Not good.
It is what it is.
And it was hard to bite the tongue the whole time.
And it's hard to believe, I've seen worse.
That is hard to believe, but I believe it.
Also bad that guy had a heart attack and drive away and die.
Nah, here?
Like here, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. It was a few years ago.
He was so upset over that.
Yeah.
I got sick like the last two times, got my name.
Yeah, it's stressful, just because you feel like you've done everything, and you get in here, and it's like, what? We've already gone over all of that, and I thank you for reminding him of that.
It's hard for everyone. It is hard for everyone.
Would need one of you to come and see me tomorrow.
I will take the day off tomorrow. What's up?
Well, I'm in at one o'clock until six o'clock.
He'll be here.
Deal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. What is it recently with three times is like the charm? This one, Earl came in three times. Ariel is gonna come back in, yeah.
Ariel's just gonna run a while, I think, too, because she's got in a butter that is just adamant about it not happening.
Honestly, Ariel's gonna do a better job with her applications.
Yeah, that was really hazy.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I've done the best I can to try, if there's nothing else I can do. At some point, it's just, she gets to throw herself at the mercy of the board, and that's, my job is over.
Yep.
Yep, nope.
Thanks, man.
I'll just work out an email back and forth.
Yeah, that'd be fine, and we'll try to figure something out that works well for you, and we're getting taken care of. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, alright. So, next item. New business?
Is there any new business? Seeing no new business, let's get into budget discussion. We need to close the door.
Are we on the budget discussion?
Budget discussion.
I have a couple of things. One, um, and I, and I had talked to Todd a little bit about this. I, I really was short on time when it came to presenting some budget ideas to the selectmen, um, because of Mr. Tom's, uh, departure and Todd coming on and stuff. So at the last meeting, to make sure it made it to the budget committee, I requested of the, uh, select board that they include five thousand dollars in the planning board's budget for, um, ordinance work.
I'm on the budget committee.
You are? How much of it made it?
It made it.
Alright, so.
So what will that get us? Who will that get us?
Well, there's, we have, there are two options that I'm pursuing on behalf of the board. Um, the one is, um, Nicole Brient, who is the code enforcement and town planner for Bodenham. Uh, who after eight years, or might be ten now, her and I have worked together. She's taken an ordinance that looked much like ours and reduced it to about, it's about that thick. It's very comprehensive. It's very easy to work with. I have spoken also with Ruth in regards to that, that it might be financially the best advantage because we could hire her as an employee with a, uh, an agreement with the town of Bodenham. Um, she would be able to offer about five hours a week or so. Um, not exactly certain how much, but we would essentially looking at the ordinance in three separate phases. Uh, the first phase would be to just try to condense the ordinance, get the overlap out of it, get the inconsistencies out of it. All of that sort of stuff, which would probably take away in my mind, close to a third of what's there already. And, and so essentially, when it comes to bringing that, and this would be for the, um, the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Not this year's meeting, but next year's town meeting. If so, if there's any kind of pushback on that, basically, we, we're just kinda rearranging it and cleaning it up. Make it a little more workable document that's a little easier to understand by both the board and the applicants because there's a lot of it in here that gets a little bit confusing.
Well, I think there's a recognition by the selectmen and the budget, budget committee that the ordinances are in dire shape.
Yeah, and they really need help.
And the committee can't continue to nickel and dime it, months on end, trying to fix it. We need to bring in an outside consultant.
Yeah, and it's right. You only got a couple hours a month here to try to work on something, and you just can't get much done in a year. So you really need someone that, and, and I, I trust Nicole, but just to, to be on the safe side, I also have gotten ahold of this woman, Stephanie Carver, who's working for GP Cog. Um, she's also gonna put together a proposal. And she was supposed to have it for this meeting and apologized yesterday to me via email that she didn't get it here. So at least we'll have a couple of options to look at. So she's trying to put together, Stephanie's trying to put together a, sort of an outline and a, and a cost estimate. There used to be some money provided by the state to sort of help the towns with this, but, um, the most recent couple of years' work up there has evaporated almost all of that. So the, the, the second part of that being is if it makes it through the town meeting, what I'd like to do is arrange for Nicole to come over and do an interview with you guys and sort of allow her to show you what it is that she was able to do with our ordinance, and some of her perspective. She's really bright, um, and she, she's good, and I, uh, I appreciate her work, so. Uh, that's would be my first preference, but I just thought it was fair, we get a look around at what's, what's out there and what it would run.
Yeah, well, we're hooked up with GP Cog now.
Yeah, well, GP Cog was not very encouraging about the dollar figure, so, because they're gonna be considerably more expensive for an hour's time.
Well, and AvTog was not useful.
Yeah, and, and so.
Kinda irritated that we spent all that money to start with. But I do, I think we need to talk to, at least two.
Yeah.
And see what their approach will be, what their quotes will be, and decide, yes, we want one of them, or we wanna keep looking and see what else is out there.
Yeah, so that's basically where we're at. We'd get, get you guys some information, get you guys some ideas about.
Some kind of presentation.
Yeah, and, you know, and, um, and then.
Have a copy of Boden's ordinance?
I do. It's actually in the office. I can, let me grab it real quick.
I wonder if it's online that we could just spin through and see how much easier this actually is. I think if we had an set of ordinances that were easier for people to read. They wouldn't be so irritated when they get here.
Well, but also for us.
Yeah, exactly.
Like that friggin' backlog ordinance, what does it say? Hate that ordinance.
Well, Nicole and I both looked at that, and essentially, that language can be done in about two or three paragraphs and just inserted into the land use ordinance and abandon all the other parts about it.
That's what I've been saying for ten years.
Yeah, and just, and, and still essentially protect the town in the same way. This is far more comprehensive than Durham's ordinance. That's the land use, flood zone, subdivision, and shoreline zone.
So this is online? You can go onto the?
I'm pretty sure it's online.
Go on to his site and?
Yeah, it should be there.
Go on and spin through it.
Yeah, um, feel free to, one of you, if you'd like, one of you to take it and go through it. I can, I can try to get you more copies. That's my.
No, it's, you should keep your copy, but.
I have, I have another one.
It's online. I think we can have a look.
And I'm gonna get a new one in about a month anyway, because we've made revisions for this year's.
amended every year?
Pretty much, yeah. We go through it. Our planning board is pretty good about going through the, or regularly going through the ordinance.
So would we have a goal in terms of a timeframe for doing this? Like, would we say calendar year, or?
Yeah, it would, the idea would be that the, whatever the first phase is outlined to be would be prepared for next year's town meeting to be voted on, yeah. So that, that would, that, that's what I'm representing the idea to be, if the board agrees that that's where they wanna go with it.
I think trying to have kind of your way here, but I just. A discrete timeframe, you know, so it's not just kind of constantly rolling.
Well, yeah, I, I think goals and times are important, and that's gonna be your discussion with whoever sits before you in the, in the interviews, is we need to, we need to feel confident that we can get to this point by this time.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not their fault, though, but we've been spinning our wheels for a long time almost, and.
Well, you just, you can't do this as a committee.
You can't.
No, you can't. It's, no, you can't. You can't sit down here and decide what the meaning of what is. It takes you three months.
Twenty minutes to talk through a definition.
Yeah, exactly.
We haven't gotten it out of the definition section.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And it's not our fault. It's, it's not what we're doing.
You can't do this work as a committee.
I think it's actually structurally in, inappropriate to try to do this work in committee.
And the reality is, is John Maloney was supposed to give us something to work with, and he didn't give us enough to work with.
No.
Sometimes I think that that, and, and in John's defense, sometimes I think it's a little hard for them to get a sense of, I'm gonna give you a document, and this is what I would pass. Now do what you want with it, versus try to figure out how to sort of just keep sneaking things in. Well, if you don't wanna do this, do this, and they kinda just wander around in circles after a while. It's a little bit difficult, so.
There's no way to put up there.
My interpretation would be to put a document together and say, if this were my choice, this is what I would do.
Well, I think, I think we can stick to the principles of our current ordinance while cleaning it up significantly. And if there are places where whoever we take says, you know, this principle probably doesn't work, like, for example, tonight, we were talking about if a new commercial building is built, it has to be screened from the second floor of a residential building.
Within a thousand feet.
Do we, do we really?
We really need that? Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, well, there's a, but, yeah.
So there are some substantive conversations we need to have, but a lot of it is just organizational.
Well, see, but, and that's the reason why this sort of facing with the first part, just, just getting the garbage out.
If you get rid of the inconsistencies and the garbage, we can then have those discussions.
Larger discussions come into play when people start saying, you're gonna let somebody put a Walmart next to my house? And not have to, you know, so the, the, at least the initial cleanup part, if there's no essential significant changes to the focus or scope of the ordinance, most folks are probably not gonna get in the way of it at town meeting. And at least we wind up with a cleaner document. And through the cleaner document and using it, a lot of these things, like these buffers and so on, we'll, we're, we're gonna be hitting our heads on them. And we're gonna just start making bullet notes, okay, for next year. And the other approach to that is that i- in the following years, as you decide to amend the ordinances, I would recommend, if you think that it's gonna be a fight, to do your amendments one at a time.
Yeah.
It makes a long meeting, but at least some of it will get put through, and then you, you know, you move the ball and chain another three feet, and the next year, you just keep going. Because sometimes what happens, that people dig their heels in. If you hand them an ordinance with a lot of changes, and it's an up or down vote, you're gonna get a down vote on it most of the time. Because people don't understand what they're reading very much. So it's a decision that you guys will wanna make as to just how encumbered you wanna be in regards to the town meeting and, and recommendations for ordinance changes, but.
And check out their backlog ordinance. That's it.
I like it.
And it does, and it does everything you want it to do.
It says a backlog shall.
Yes.
Not, you know, the planning board may have to consider this if.
In the, the definition, uh, I got there from the definition on the front in less than five minutes.
Yeah, there you go.
And that's all done.
There you go. How nice would that be?
So.
Definition calls for no frontage.
Yeah.
Um.
Alright.
Do we, do we need to address shoreline at some point?
We have to.
We don't, we don't have it, right?
No, we, we do. We are under state imposition.
But we don't have an ordinance, right?
We do not have an ordinance, but anyone in the shoreline zone still has to comply with the state shoreline zone standards. So I'm required as a CEO to see that they comply, even though it's not. So I'm required as a CEO to see that they comply, even though it's not in our ordinance. It makes it very confusing for folks that are trying to do work in.
Yeah, so how would that work on enforcement? Could we enforce?
Yeah.
Um, you're required to enforce quite a bit of it by state law.
Right, but we don't have an ordinance.
So you have to use the state statute, you have to use the state guidelines inherent in a shoreline zone permit, and you're going to get one coming this spring, and I've got a copy of the guidelines. But that is something that, between the shoreline zone and the forestry issues, those sorts of things, and the new FEMA maps in regards to the flood zone locations, all of that stuff has got to get inputted into this thing in it next year. And so we're all going to have a lot of work to do on it in that regard. But yeah, I, I'm, the shoreline zone has got to go in there, and Nicole did a nice job in setting it up in there, because there's a lot of shoreline zone in Bodenham, both title and non-title. Unfortunately for Durham, you don't have any title, which makes it a lot cleaner to just try to go about it. You're into, you know, significant river segments and great ponds and aquifers and swamps and, you know, wetlands and stuff, which is a lot easier to try to sort of understand. But yeah, so, you know, as soon as I know a little more about the, any of the permitting coming up in that regard, I'm going to, I'll try to get you guys some information in, in dealing with the shoreline stuff, because you're going to have to hear it.
Yeah, yeah.
So this binder I have has things that say like waste facilities, electrical, plumbing, is all of that in here?
Yeah, the plumbing stuff, of course, is the state statute.
Okay.
The electrical statute in ours is, is really nothing in it, and it actually could be eliminated because in, in, when, in here it requires that they comply with the NEC and the most current state adopted version of the NEC, it's already covered. So short of getting a permit, the only thing we need is the town of Durham has a blurb in the land use ordinance. Now Bodenham doesn't have an electrical ordinance.
So this is fairly comprehensive then in terms of?
It's really comprehensive, yeah, it covers pretty, it covers almost everything, of course, we're the same as Bodenham in plumbing, that it's all state, so that's the same. So the only thing we do different here in Durham versus Bodenham, in Bodenham you want to do electrical work, you get a state cert permit from the state inspector. In Bodenham you come to me and get it, and, but other than that, it's all the same rules, they're all following the same book as the NEC up here. There's nothing in the ordinance that outlines much of that. I think the cable stuff and things along that line that are in there, a bunch of that's on, in sort of, doesn't even need to be for us, it's that sort of John's baby, you know, the communication stuff and so on. And that's just exactly the kind of sort of stuff, the waste, the solid waste ordinance in there, we've been in violation of for about fourteen years because it requires that the town hire a specific individual company to do the solid waste, and we haven't been using them forever. There's, when you really start getting into this thing and start looking at the way it was constructed, it was constructed to deconstruct, everything fell apart after a short period of time. So the, the language and the perspective wants to be that it can carry forward what the current perspective is, you know, that, you don't call for a specific NEC 2014 and then don't update it for sixteen years, you call for whatever the current state requirements are.
Yeah, I mean, there's an argument that you can do that.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it depends, and, and, well, with the NEC it's a little easier, but, so, but those are the kinds of discussions we need to have, and to just try to look through as how we want to, you know, how the board wants to present this to the selectmen, and then that's kind of where we're at. The only other thing I had, I, I did, I did throw this together, I might need to reevaluate the language. That's not the right one, I'm supposed to have more of these here. Yeah, I do, okay. In regards to making the changes in the, on the subdivision ordinance, road acceptance requirements so that they comply equally with the land use road acceptance requirements, it was just a small change in the language, but I was under the impression we were hoping to present that at this, at this meet, at this upcoming.
Town meeting.
Town meeting. So just replace the top paragraph four with the bottom paragraph four. It requires that the, it go to town vote, which it needs to anyway, because that's state law. The subdivision ordinance seemed to indicate that the road committee could accept the road.
Oh, that's right.
Um, why do we require the written unanimous approval of the road acceptance committee?
Um, because they need to evaluate the private road is actually meeting the, the allowable standard in the growth district, and has been built to that standard, and they all need to agree in order to send it off to town meeting, I'm. So the, the road commissioner and the code enforcement officer are the ones who are to make the, the majority of the determination about the standard that needs to be met. The road committee is to make the determination that the standard has been met, and then agree together to send it forward. So if somebody on the road commission decides they don't want it going to town meeting, it doesn't go. And I'm not sure why that's in there.
Uh, you're not sure why, I'm sorry, that's the new language?
No, one of them, one of, actually the, the bottom page, bottom number four is actually language verbatim out of the land use ordinance. The top paragraph is verbatim out of the subdivision ordinance, and they're not the same, and they need to be the same.
So the bottom number four, you're just pulling out of the land use ordinance to make them consistent.
Exactly, to bring them into, into, so they're the same. That they don't make sense isn't, they're just going to make sense in the same way or nonsense in the same way of both documents.
So the question is, my question is, do we want them to actually make sense? Or do we just want them to be nonsensical, but consistently nonsensical?
I think at this point for this year.
Just make them consistent.
Yeah, make them the same.
Yeah, nonsensical is good at this point.
And that's one of those things that will be.
It's a low bar.
One of those things for the next year that, well, you know, you guys are going to want to start to look into and, and get some ideas on and.
Okay, then.
Do you need, um, do we need to recommend, make a recommendation on this to the board of selectmen?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so I move to recommend the changes to the subdivision ordinances summarized in this sheet.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Hold those in favor.
And then this will probably go to Jack for review before it's finalized.
Does read better.
Yeah.
And it needs to be the same.
I mean, do we think it needs to go to Jack if we know, A, it doesn't make sense?
Well, the select, the select board will probably send all of the warrant articles to Jack. So as an article for town meeting, I think they'll probably just, it will just go the standard route, as far as I know. I could be wrong in that, but I believe that's the sort of standard protocol. Casey sees something in there, he can flag it or stuff, so. And then maybe, someone from the planning board should make a point of coming to the public hearings for the warrant article in case there's any questions or things that need to be brought up on this. It's one of the discussions I had with, with Todd, I'm not from Durham, so in regards to the ordinance, you guys are the ones that have to sell the program. So that's something you guys can figure, figure that part out.
So try to remember that caveat that I put on being vice president this year.
Can't come to town meeting. I found this.
One of the FEMA's, what is this?
It's a FEMA CD.
I've got the new ones issued by FEMA, but is this the, oh yeah, that's not even relevant anymore. You should, can keep it for.
File it.
Yeah.
File. File.
I have one other thing.
All right, have we covered everything?
Uh, we need to do the minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
I have one general question about the minutes, the way we do minutes. I'm used to minutes being not as explicit as our minutes, is it typical for this committee to have?
That, we've had pretty explicit minutes because always a question.
Can I have a court?
Yeah.
Well, it's generally accepted the minutes are supposed to be sort of a brief outline of the meetings.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of my point.
With the important things like votes and stuff are supposed to be very specific.
Seven, eight, nine pages. Um, I have cut back quite a bit. And when there is actual action on a application, then there really isn't much need for explaining why things aren't going forward or who didn't bring everything in, or what they're supposed to bring within time when we run through them, the criteria, and then the approval, it zip, zip, zip. Four pages isn't really a whole lot, considering one page essentially is your.
Yeah.
Agenda.
No, I'm fine with that, I'm trying to get a sense of what the history has been in this committee and.
I'm wanting on making them be as easy as possible.
We should, not tonight, but at some point when we're quiet, we should have a conversation about how we want to document our decisions.
That's, that's sort of my point.
Especially on contentious issues. Should we be issuing findings of fact and conclusions of law?
Yes.
Do we just want to rely on our minutes, which is what we've been doing? But we should, we should have a real conversation about who drafts those, how they get done, how we document our decision, because right now we're just relying on the minutes.
Yeah, and as it stands right now, if anything goes to appeal, it will be sent back here to complete a finding of fact and conclusionary statements.
Well, it, there are some types of applications that require them.
Yeah.
Some, it just requires written documentation of it, and it's not clear whether that would get kicked back. But either way, we should talk about what we want our best practices to be. And I missed the conversation with Jack, so I don't know if that came up, but.
It was, that was what most of that meeting was about, was that conclusionary statements and finding of facts are critical to the board's decision-making process and need to be, need to be done without any.
Documented.
Clearly documented, statements as clear as possible. But findings of fact and conclusionary statements need to be specific to the application and not general. So in some measure, somehow, what's happening has to actually get brought into the wording that the ordinance outweighs as far as finding what this, I find this particular condition to be met because, in this particular case, so-and-so's project in this particular circumstance represents this environment, and that's why therefore it, I agree that it meets the requirements of the ordinance. So there's a sort of specificity that's, that's, that's usually looked for.
Right, and that's a little different than what I was saying, is the question I'm raising is how do we document it? Right now, we just document it with Jill's notes.
If she's doing, if, if she's doing well enough in representing what, you know, pretty much word for word, what the conclusionary statements were and the findings are, and, you know, the votes, as long as that's documented cleanly and clearly, and they should be actually set as a separate set of documents that go into the file with the conditional approval. A copy of the, of the findings and conclusions should be in the file.
So if we had a clear set of minutes for each month, that for, say, Burnhams were here, in the file with the Burnhams, would that be good enough for a finding of fact?
Yeah, well, I would have been, I've been giving Jill a copy of the, the, both the application checklist and the approval criteria, and in the approval criteria, I've been, I, I hope I did it more than once. I've been trying to leave her enough room to write in underneath each one exactly what's said. And then that should actually be typed up and mimicked line for line, particular item for item, you know, what the, what the, the, what it is that needs to be met and how the board found that had been met. And then that's exactly what should go in the file.
So.
It's a little bit more, it's, it should be, that should also be in the minutes, but there, there should be a copy outside of the minutes that's included in the application.
So I think we should have a conversation later about, because you're right, our minutes are, because we've got a full public record through the video sheet. We've got very detailed minutes, but they're not easy to pick out, because they're so detailed, they're not easy to pick out, okay? Criteria A was met because X, B, so maybe we should talk about whether we want the minutes to be very high level, and we just have this detailed findings that we make, whether we want to keep them in, all in the minutes, which is what we have now, we should just, we should have that conversation at some point.
Yeah, as long as we've got a clear set of, we go here, here, and here, and then we're going to do conclusions.
Review checklist is going to have to be amended, edited, because it doesn't address the general standard. So like when Mr. Sonberg's first attorney came in, she pointed out the buffer and the issues, and that's not in our checklist. So that's going to be another issue.
Checklist for the conditional use application are particular to the application. As far as, as I understand it, the general performance standards have to be met by everybody.
Right, but we're not looking at them, because they're not on our checklist, we just march through the checklist.
Yeah, when we do ours in Bodenham, we don't, our, our ordinance is structured really differently, so we wind up covering all the bases in that regard. The other thing that, what, that you guys should discuss, and it seems to be coming, general practice among boards is that the minutes are signed and dated as they're accepted and put into the record by all the members of the board that were at the meeting. So, so it's not just a matter of just accepting them and then going on, now it.
Oh, we could take a, a copy of this, I'll sign it.
Right, you take a copy, you, you know, you mention and mark the amendments, and then when it's, when it's updated because of what you want it updated, you know, so-and-so said so-and-so, now that, I think that this went this way and you recommend changes, then at the next meeting, the minutes would be represented with the changes that you required as you approved them, and there would be a signature page on there that you would all sign.
In essence, that happens now.
Should we write these after they get done ma, making changes?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, good, good, yeah, so they just, we just need a title page, minutes, signature page.
If you go online, if Ann has made changes, which you have a propensity to do.
What do you say, Jeff?
You will see, the original, the first set of minutes, they are not advertised until they're approved. And I put amended minutes, minutes of, let's say, January first, amended February first.
Yeah, so we just need to include a signature page on those. That's good.
On the website, additionally, once the minutes are approved by you, they're approved as presented. I have an original, it gets filed in the meetings, minutes book for the planning board as required by the town. And I also send them to John for posting. So that's done within two or three days after the meeting, the actual meeting.
I'm not sure we need, I'm not sure why we need to sign minutes, but if we are going to be keeping a separate document, that's going to be our findings of fact and conclusions of law, if that's what we decide to do, those are typically signed. But if we vote to accept the minutes, I'm not sure why we need to sign them.
No, they're my, they're my minutes, I'm the one that's signing them.
I'm not sure why, I'm not sure why that this is becoming standard practice now either, but I can talk to Leah or look into it a little bit, but it seems to be the way that the program is going by.
Well, this is a conversation, you know, maybe we add that onto our conversation. But I do think we need to have a conversation about how we document our decisions.
I, I'm, I would.
Anybody see anything that needed to be changed in the minutes?
I mailed them out to you all last week.
Yeah.
Hoping to get some feedback so they would slide through nicely tonight because of the Sundberg and Burnham issue. because of the Sundberg and Burnham issue.
You have to find something now that she said that. I know.
I'm waiting.
I'm gonna move to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
As presented?
As presented.
I'll second it.
Ann, all right. Boy, you made me sweat there.
All those in favor?
Enough of a pain tonight. I abstained since I wasn't present.
Yeah?
Well, all right, can I hear a motion to, uh, close?
So moved, motion of adjournment.
So I got it.
All done, John.
All done, John.